I'd like to call the meeting to order. I said happy fall, y'all.
Yeah.
It didn't take long, an hour or something, and our temperature changed dramatically. So, anyway, welcome everyone. And I would like to call the meeting to order and have you all join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Secretary, will please call the roll.
Trustee Stirring.
Present.
Trustee Michener.
Present, thank you.
Trustee Gura Murthy.
Present.
Trustee Dooley.
Here.
Trustee Crawford.
Here.
Trustee Chira Curry.
Present.
Trustee Bartlett is present. Student Representative Carcarla.
Present.
Student Representative Saleen.
Present.
Okay, all present and accounted for. I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Member Bartlett?
Second.
Member Michener. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? No? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Michener?
Yes.
Trustee Gura Murthy?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Chira Curry?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda. You've had a chance to take a look at it, I presume. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed. Okay, member Chira Curry? Member Kuru Murthy. Motion's been made and seconded. And any discussion? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Trustee Gura Murthy?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Chira Curry?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Michener?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, we have two presentations tonight that we're really excited to hear about. And I guess, Julie, did you want to say anything about them before we go ahead?
I'm sorry. I thought I missed something with claims and warrants.
Oh. Did I miss something?
Okay, so you did. Okay, great. That's what I wanted to double check. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I'm very excited to introduce both of you to Debbie Words and to Amy Kennedy. They are from the Novi Community Coalition. They're here this evening to talk about the partnership that we actually developed together, starting this summer, with the Novi Community Coalition, and how it's going and how it might move forward. So Debbie and Amy, thanks so much for joining us.
Hi, I'm Debbie Words. I am the executive director of the Novi Community Coalition. And I first off just want to say thank you for letting us come tonight to kind of update you what is going on with the program and for this partnership. We feel very blessed and honored that we've been able to partner on this program. And I have to say, Julie and her staff have been absolutely amazing. I love Julie, but I mean, her whole staff has just been welcoming and accommodating and flexible and so helpful. So she's just done such a great job. So I wanted everyone to know that. This is Amy Kennedy, our community outreach. She has been with us since the start of the program. We do have a new person. Her name is Becca Woods, who's not here tonight because she's actually with the ambassador class, so she couldn't be here tonight. But she's actually going to be taking on this role in this resource position. And Amy has graciously accepted to move to Waterford. We are starting a coalition in Waterford, so Amy will be moving over to Waterford with us. So that's why she's, we have Becca now on board, too. Before Amy kind of talks about the actual resource program, I just wanted to kind of make sure that everyone knew what the coalition was, because I don't know if everyone does. But we are a nonprofit organization here in Novi. We are under an umbrella called the Alliance of Coalitions for Healthy Communities. And there's actually like 22 of us in all the different school districts in Oakland County. We're each our own nonprofit. We basically, our mission is to reduce risk factors, promote protective factors, and help our youth grow up to be healthy, drug-free, and successful in life. We do that through fun and creative programming. And what happens is we're a community coalition, so we get people from all the different sectors in the community. We have 12 identified sectors, such as parents, youth, law enforcement, city, school. And we kind of come together. We do community assessment. We do surveys. And we ask the kids even. We ask parents, you know, things that are going on with them. So then we can look at that and see what the needs are. Then we do implementation of programs that are evidence-based. If they're not already evidence-based, we do pilot programs and we do research on them to make them, you know, meaningful, impactful, and intentional. We have really cool, fun programs, so you all got a folder. There is a list of our programs that we have done in the past year. I know it doesn't really explain what each program is. If anyone has further questions, I won't go into what each program is. But if you do, reach out to me at any time. My card is in there, too. I have a brochure in there. Reach out anytime. I would love to explain what our programs are because we do really fun, creative programming. We always evaluate all our programs to make sure that we are on track and we're making an impact on the community. So that is a little bit about us. You did get a little goodie bag. This is just some fun things. These little pigs, this is our little mascot, Lulu. Some of you that have been on Zoom meetings with me have met Lulu. But this is our stress ball that we put in our coping toolkits. There's just some fun little things in here, some puppets. This is actually a little frisbee, if anyone's wondering what's in this little pocket. But, you know, open your fortune cookie sometime. We try to really take the stigma out of mental health. And we want everyone to know that they are special and they are, they're enough, you know. We really encourage that. So everyone realizes, you know, we're all different in our own ways. We're all going things. We try to promote that understanding of each other and kindness and stuff like that. So there's just a few goodies for you. And I will let Amy kind of take it over a little bit more specifically about the program that we have partnered with the library with.
Thank you, Debbie. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Just to reiterate, my name's Amy Kennedy, and thank you, Debbie. And Julie, thank you so much for allowing us to be in the library. I have truly enjoyed being there and meeting everyone. It's been a phenomenal experience. Just to give you a little bit of history, we received a $50,000 grant beginning November 21st, 2021. And it's now extended through April 30th, 2023. Yay! The grant was in response to COVID-19 and the mental stability of people. So overall, we, the grant was to help Oakland County residents. So anyone in Oakland County feeling any sort of trouble in terms of housing, finding a job, any health barriers, anything that they might need a little extra assistance with and don't know how to reach out for help. So in that, we met with Julie initially and came up with an action plan saying, this is what we, we have this grant money. We want to be in the library once a week as to house a place for people to come meet with us. And resources that the library has, we can link and partner with that and form more of a community-based approach to helping individuals. So we started up, we met with the library. We thought Thursdays would be a good time during the day. And our first day at the library was May 19th. And we're there on, like I said, on Thursdays, and we have the local history room in room 227, and it's a beautiful room with a view. If you look in your folder, there's pictures of the library setup that we have. And as of May 19th, 19 people have actually reached out for some sort of assistance. And it was truly amazing. We did some advertising, the library. We want to thank you very much for all the advertising that you've done. I know that the flyer went out in the main area there. That's where a lot of people have seen it. It went out with your emails. We did mass emails, went out with police officers, school districts. And honestly, once the flyers started going out, I got calls right away. And I was overwhelmed, shocked, because we weren't sure exactly what we were going to get. But like I said, day one on the library, I had a first appointment, and they needed help with how, making bills. They needed help finding a job, you know, getting their education kind of in place. So I felt like my job was not only to link these people with the resources, but a lot of times they needed follow-up calls, too, and somebody to kind of show that they're, that they care and to hold them accountable. My job was not to do everything for them, but to teach them how to do it. So we had the resources and we have the people. Here's the phone number, call. And sometimes I even made pre-calls, saying, hey, you're going to get this person to call and have them reach out and kind of give them the backstory on the person, so it wasn't so much pressure on them. And I would oftentimes write, you know, follow up with this person. So we developed all the paperwork, the intake forms, the follow-up forms, and that. But like I said, as far, as of today, we've reached out to, 19 people have reached out to us. Most of the time, it's via text messages or phone calls. And again, we respond via phone, email, text messages, whatever they're comfortable with. Also, we have hygiene bags at the library. And on this are the pictures of the hygiene bags. And this was kind of in response to people might not necessarily want to ask for help, but we wanted, we wanted them to feel like it was there if they needed it. So we've given out 38 of those already, which is awesome. And one of the main things that we're pretty proud of is people need help. And oftentimes, they might not know how to reach out for help. So we created little cards for the bathrooms. And it's crisis line, human trafficking, substance abuse, kind of crisis mode things. And out of curiosity, we counted from day one as to how many cards were taken. And four more were actually taken last week. So this number on your sheet is inaccurate. It's up to 23. Now, again, we don't know if, what they're taking the cards for, but we know that cards are being taken and people are needing help. So it's a great, they're about business-sized cards, and they're in the bathroom, and people can just slide it in their pocket. So I am truly proud of the impact we've made so far. I am excited to see the program moving forward. I think that the more people hear about it, the more people reach out. And I, I'm happy to help, and I'm happy that we're able to make such an impact with the community. I'm happy to be in the library and such a central, great location. And moving forward, like Debbie had mentioned, I'm moving to Waterford to help in the Waterford Coalition. And Becca Woods will be here taking over at the library. And she's excited and done a phenomenal job. And I've chatted with her quite a bit, so I'm excited to see the transition move forward. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Our plan, since we were able to extend our grant, our plan is, if the library will still have us, is keep coming there on Thursdays until our, our grant money runs out. We would love to continue that. After our grant money runs out, we'll just have to coordinate that time to find out what funding, you know, if we can maybe come up with another grant or some more funding. But we do see a need for this. The library is a great place for, that people feel safe and comfortable coming to. But we don't even have to meet them here in the library. If they want to meet us somewhere else, we will go to them anywhere. So we're very open and stuff like that. So that is our plan, that continue for right now. And then closer to the end of our grant funds, we'll take a look and see how we can extend that a little bit more. But we would like to continue. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, thanks, Debbie and Amy. I mean, I'm really excited to see this program. I know that we've had the Oakland Livingston Human Service Agency that has been at the library, too. But it's, it's great, you know, especially these times, you know, because we understand that people have been under some unprecedented mental health, you know, kind of stresses, I think. And, and people just don't want to ask, and they don't know who to ask. So I think the idea that you've got cards in the bathrooms and everything, I think is, is a great idea. And I have noticed, as I've visited other libraries, that, I don't know if this is, this is a trend, but I'm, I'm seeing now, and even when we went to Chatham, they had a full-time person in the library every day doing what you're doing.
Right.
And they were very busy. So, you know, we really appreciate you coming to the library and doing this and providing this service for the community. It's wonderful.
I've also noticed, excuse me, that people, if they don't come in to reach out for themselves, they come in on behalf of someone else. We've gotten calls saying, hey, you know, it's not me that needs the help, but we're looking for my son or my brother-in-law. And I said, absolutely, come on in. We'll see what we can do. And we've given them resources to give someone else. So helping help people, I guess.
Yeah, for sure.
Kathy, to add to your point, that's how this conversation actually got started, was with Debbie and I talking and us, me being aware of social workers being hired into public libraries in, in particular communities that might need it. And so that's how our conversation started, with me knowing and understanding that and seeing if there was a way to, even once a week, bring some kind of resource to the building. So we appreciate it.
That's exactly how it started. And that's what we do. People come to us, like, come to us with, you know, things. You see a need, you see something, we like to do it, and we try to make it happen. So we do have extra cards of these, if anyone wants any extra to pass out. We do have a lot of these. We try to promote this as much as we can, like Amy said, through the schools. The police, the clergyman, Michael has them to take out into the community when he's out there. But we, every event we're at, we pass it out. The library has done it. We put it on social media in our newsletters. But we want to make sure we get to as many people as possible, so they know that there's there. And there's so many different needs. We had a woman that come in that needed help getting masks and gloves, you know. It can be a different range of needs and stuff like that. So we help with pretty much anything.
I think, I saw Mr. Stirring, our trustee Stirring's hand first, and then trustee Michener. So, Mr. Stirring.
Well, we're certainly happy and excited to be partnering with you and adventure. I, I know that you're in the library on, you know, Thursdays, or somebody's in the library. Is there another physical address people can go to? And I imagine most of your contact's by phone or by email. But is there, is there another place, other than Thursday, that people can physically go to meet with somebody? Or is the address on TAF more of an administrative address?
That is more of the administrative. Right now, we just have a little cubicle in the technology room at the school. We are going to be moving over to the high school, but again, that's not going to be really ideal unless it's like a high school parent. So that's why we kind of make arrangements that we can go to them. If they don't want us to go to them, we can meet at Novi Coffee or, you know, in a room here on a different day in the library or something like that. So we do make accommodations to fit people's schedule.
And transportation needs. Some people might not have transportation need, like, means to get here, so we can come to you.
Thank you.
Member Michener?
Thank you so much. I'm going to put my glasses on a second. Look right at you and see you, actually. So fantastic presentation. I knew Deb, I've met you before.
Student Mental Alliance, I think, was the first time, yeah.
Yep, when we first started the, the Novi Mental Health Alliance. And you were already doing phenomenal work there. And this is just like so inspiring to see you still doing the work. And just to, to note the differences, that was before the pandemic. So I just want to note, like, you've been doing the work consistently. And I think sometimes people, sometimes work is thankless. So I just want to like mention that Debbie's, and I'm sure you too, Amy, but I know Debbie has been doing the work consistently before the pandemic, when people may not have been as comfortable with talking about mental health or even seeing the need that we all learned that we need after the pandemics. I wanted to mention that. But this is fantastic. I'm glad that you all created a partnership for the library. And I know, Julie, that you've had Oakland Livingston Human Service Agency here and like some other groups. This, however, and that's no knock towards them. That was my first job when I was 14. But this is so specific to the needs, and it doesn't create any barriers. Like, there's so many needs that people have that they might be ashamed of, or they might think, is this serious? Or, you know, they're going to laugh at me if I ask for this. The open-endedness of it, I think, is really going to be equitable. And I think it's going to be something as a game changer for the way our library interacts with the community. So thank you.
Thank you. And I can say, we're, we're really caring. We're, we're all very passionate about what we do. Yeah. But we've actually had feedback. And one particular client just said, you know, just, we've had him cry to us and just say, you guys are the first people that I felt not judged, you know, and actually took the time to listen to me, you know. Sometimes they, they just want to be heard.
Yep.
So we're very compassionate. And I think that's a huge part of it, you know. There's, there's no judging going on here. Personal experience, been there, done that, you know. We've all been through different situations, and no one should be judged like that. So we're, we're very compassionate about that. So also, part of our grant, too, you do have a flyer in your thing. Our, we have a home visiting program, too. So if anyone knows of, anyone that is prenatal to the age of five, we actually go to their home. We do parenting skills. We bring in activities for parents to engage with their child. We do assessing on the child. And we just try to help get the child ready, school-ready. So we do it from prenatal up to age five. And that is starting to create a lot of interest. And again, that is for all of Oakland County, too. It doesn't have to be Novi-specific. But we're actually doing some of this even at Grace Center of Hope in Pontiac with parenting classes. And then continuing on with the home visiting for parents that are getting their kiddos back and stuff like that. And then we also work with the Student Mental Health Committee at the high school. And we've done a lot of work with them the past year through this grant, too, with different presentations, through You Matter Week, Crush the Stigma. We've made resource cards for teens that, we just got them a big clear rack that is going to be mounted on the wall. And it's going to be filled with school supplies, toothpaste, little things of deodorant, all kinds of different things. But it's also going to have some resources on there. And that's what this are. The kids can just use their camera to the QR code. And this connects them right to the, the resource, whether they just need someone to talk, or maybe they're looking, Truth Initiative, looking to stop vaping, or they just need someone to talk to. We have those resources on there for our kids, too. So that was all part of our grant, too. But. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Nope, seeing none. Thanks again for all you do.
Thank you. Thank for the time.
Okay, for our next presentation, I know we need a drum roll probably for this. We, we've been looking forward to this for a few months. So I guess, Julie, is there anything that you want to say?
I want to welcome both of our wonderful student reps up to our podium here. So Abai and Rida, please join us. I know that you are excited to be sharing your information.
Is there a way to get the presentation out there, or should we just?
It should be right on the laptop. Usually it's loaded.
Oh, it's just right there.
Did you see? Ah. Great. Fabulous. Okay. And you know how to just make it a slideshow. There we go.
Good evening, everybody. I'm so glad to be here again and see you guys. It's been like three meetings since I've seen you, since it's been a crazy summer. We were in Pakistan for like five weeks, a little bit longer. And I got to see all my family, so that was nice. And then we went to Dallas. And then we came back here. And then I had SAT. So that was very fun. Okay, so yeah, this end of, end of the year presentation has been much delayed, so I'm really glad to finally start this.
All right, so no, no further ado, we'll start our 2021, 2022 end of the year presentation.
So for the summer and fall 2021 teen and tween programs, we have been really lucky to have Ms. Gotaga, Ms. Farkas, and us working on these events to help provide programs for the tween and youth communities. So I'm just going to run through a few of the events that we've held in the fall and summer. There was Sticky Fingers Virtual Cooking Classes. So there were both Japanese-inspired cuisine and Harry Potter-inspired cuisine. There was Mad Science of Detroit Tales and Tales. There was Let's Draw Monsters Virtual Card There was Let's Draw Monsters Virtual Cardtuning Program in the fall, and there was a Creepy Crawley's Program as well. We've also had monthly programs that we've been talking about over the year. We've had the Between the Pages Tween Book Club Trivia to get tweens more excited for reading, and we've had Tailwagon Reading Buddies to get young kids more involved in reading and get them excited to read.
And moving on to the, some of the most popular winter, spring, and summer 2022 Tween and Teen Programs, starting off with the Mad Science of Detroit Fire and Ice, the virtual SAT Practice Test, STEAM Leap Into the Science World Wind Edition, and Mad Science of Detroit Presents Amazing Oceans. And similar to, uh, spring and summer of 2021, Between the Pages Tween Book Club Trivia and Tailwagon Reading Buddies have been really popular monthly meetings.
So moving on to our Grab and Go Kits that we've had, we've continued offering these during, it was due to COVID and high demand and interest by our community. So we offer these Grab and Go Kits for people to just register in advance, come to the library, grab these kits and be able to do it at home with their families. So Tween and Teen Kits included Upcycled Craft Kits, Harvest Crafts, Airplant Terrariums, and Cross Stitch Bookmarks. So those have been some fun kit, kits for teen and tweens to take home and be able to do with friends or with family, and we have more kits coming this year.
And moving on to the MI Library Quest, um, the MI Library Quest is a series of statewide virtual te, quests for teens. In collaboration with the Library of Michigan and many public libraries throughout the state, uh, our staff have worked together to create creative, innovative, and fun competitive quests for teens in Michigan. Novi Public Library participated in two during the 2021, 2022 year, um, and those are the two that we featured on the screen there.
So for our programs overview, the programs hosted from July 2021 to July 2022 that were among the most popular were the STEAM, the Science Technology Engineering Art and Math Programs, such as Mad Science of Detroit, which we talked about earlier in the year. The Grab and Go Kits continue to remain popular. The kits allowed guests to take home a craft or activity and complete it on their own time with families or friends.
The Teen Stop displays have been a part of our monthly reports, and here are some of the highlights. In July 2021, the books set in, the Teen Stop Display, uh, featured books set in summer, and in August 2021, they featured books set in school or about school.
These are some of the Fall 2021 Teen Stop displays. So as you can see, in September, there are books that were recognizing banned book weeks. And in October 2021, we featured thrillers and mysteries on our Teen Stop displays.
And some more Fall 2021 and December, uh, Winter 2021 Teen Stop displays in November 2021, um, to celebrate Native, uh, Native American Heritage Month, books about indigenous people to celebrate the now new worry move. Books were written in one month, books that were written in one month. And in December 2021, we wrapped up the year with the best books of 21, 2021.
And here are some of our Winter 2022 Teen Stop displays. So on, in January 2022, we displayed books about winter, you know, seeing as January's in winter. And February 2022, in honor of Black History Month, we featured books written by Black authors and with Black characters.
And in Spring 2022, we featured, um, Women's History Month in March, and mainly books about feminism and female characters. And in April 2022, to celebrate National Poetry Month, we would, we featured books written in verse.
And to wrap it up, for our Summer 2022 Teen Stop displays, in May 2022, to celebrate Asian-American and Pacific Islander Month, we displayed books written by AAPI authors and with AAPI characters. In June 2022, to celebrate National Poetry Month, but we, uh, featured books written in verse.
Teen Advisory Board has also been a big part of our library, also known as TAB. Monthly meetings were held from May, uh, September 2021 to May 2022, the school year, and meetings were also conducted virtually via Zoom like the past few years. And December 21 meeting, the December 21 meeting featured a special program for the Health of it Teen Stop, Teen Edition, which, which, um, emphasized the importance of eating healthy and getting proper rest. 2022 and 2023 TAB officers were elected in the May meeting.
So to continue the Teen Advisory Board update, we had a few goals set from last year, and they were accomplished by our Teen Advisory Board. These include to be involved with community service projects in the community and to promote TAB through social media. So our Teen Advisory Board did a great job accomplishing these goals.
And some goals for this year is to assist in starting a new name for the Teen Stop Room because they didn't really enjoy the idea of having a big stop sign where they wanted teens to enter. Um, and also like previous years, they wanna be involved in many community service projects and also raise awareness about TAB to get more people into the group.
Thank you so much for listening. This has been like well-awedged, three months. Finally, we've done to the end of your presentation, so thank you so much for listening.
Well, I doubt that anybody, uh, any of, any of our, I don't, I don't know, I haven't heard the annual reports from other, um, teens, you know, on what they've done all year long, but I can't imagine anybody being much more busy than you two have been. You know, not only in your personal lives and school and everything, but to accomplish all that you've done is pretty remarkable, really. And we really appreciate the fact that your leadership has gotten so many youth involved. I mean, it's really been important that you were there. And so we really do, for all you've done, we're very appreciative. Is there anyone that wanted to say anything? Trustee Mitchner?
Yeah, I just want to say, great job. Um, you exhibit professionalism, not that we expect that you not do that, but, um, I think that sometimes you're here like before some of us are, right? Like, it's inspiring, and I think that, um, even the way that you all do, like, um, present your reports is very professional as well. And you have heart, you have so much heart. Um, and I know you're gonna do great things and continue to do great things. So it's, it's, it's been an honor to sit at the same table.
The honor is all ours. Thank you so much.
I'd like to encourage both of you to stay there and, and go ahead and give your report tonight, if you don't mind.
Yeah, of course.
Do you need, do you need your information? Or do you have it with you? Wonderful. Okay, great.
I think before, before they do that, I think, uh, member Guru Marti has a question.
Yes.
Or has comments.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say, um, I have a high schooler, so I can really appreciate, you know, what you both are doing in terms of managing your studies, SAT and everything. So I really appreciate hats off to both of you. And the amount of things that you have accomplished is amazing, so you should be really proud of yourself. The one thing I'd say, please continue this throughout your, you know, the next few years, your school, the civic engagement and leadership. So congratulations, yeah.
Yeah, of course. Thank you so much.
Okay, anyone else? All right.
So, uh, after our End of Year Report, for our August 2022 Libraries Report, looking at our Teen and Tween Library Programs, the Grab and Go Mystery Kit Program was held on August 20th. Guests received a mystery craft, uh, for the item to take home and make. For this, 24 people registered to take home crafts and make them with families and friends, which is really nice. The Tailwagon Reading Buddies Program, which we just discussed, was held on August 24th. It was an opportunity to provide a comfortable and non-judgmental space for a child and their family, if they desire, to read to a therapy dog, to encourage the children's reading skills, confidence, and love of reading. We got 15 people to come to this event. The Summer Reading Fin, Finale Parties at Paradise Park were held on August 24th and August 25th. Guests in grades kindergarten through 12th grade who completed the Summer Reading Program earned admission to the Finale Party of Paradise Park. Readers received 2.5 hours of access to the park, plus two slices of pizza and one beverage. Finale Parties generously donated by Paradise Park. The attendance for this was in between 199 people and 230 people for the two, or for the two days. So August 24th, we got 230 people to come, and for August 25th, 199 people. Okay, so I think that's amazing. Now for, Abai, for the Teen Space Update.
Teen Space, uh, resumed with the school year on September 12th, and the first TAB meeting for the, this school year will be held next Friday on September 30th. And some of the upcoming programs in October are the Spooky Suites Halloween Cupcake Decorating on October 4th, Spooky Halloween Magic with Baffling Bill held on October 18, 19th, and Tailwagon Reading Buddies on October 26th. And then the next Teen Advisory Board Meeting will be on October 28th. Um, the August Teen Stop Display featured young adult fiction books set in or about school. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, once again, I want to thank you both, and I really want to, uh, to applaud the creativity for coming up with some of the names of the programs. I mean, I'm not sure who's really done that, but whose idea it was, but your creativity really shows, and we are going to miss you both, really, so.
They'll be back next month.
They're gonna be with us?
Oh, yes.
Another year?
We do, every year we just, we have them, right? We won't miss them for very long.
Okay, well, then that's good. I feel better now.
Right.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So we'll expect even greater things. Yeah. So thank you so much for all that you've done so far and all you're gonna continue to do, we know. So anyone else have any comments about the report or questions? Nope? Yes?
I'll go ahead and release them, so, because I know they probably have things, uh, to do at home and, and lots of schoolwork already back. So thank you both for joining us tonight. Wonderful presentation. Um, I just wanted to follow up because there were some questions at last meeting about Grab and Go Kits, and since the students mentioned them, I wanted to let you know that I did have a meeting with Lindsay Gotcha, who's our new youth and teen services supervisor, and she's looking into a couple of things. We talked about, um, the current needs and assessing more demand, which I had heard from all of you. Um, budget needs is one of the things that's come up in the conversation because in order to do them, there's a cost associated with them. Um, when we were shut down during COVID, those costs were less, um, than they are now. So I just want you to be aware of that. That's one of the factors in the conversation that, um, both Lindsay and I had. Um, the timing to implement and the number of them. Um, it's staff that's doing that and putting those together. We do have a lot of wonderful volunteers, which our, our teens do help in volunteer hours in our youth department and with Lindsay, which helps put those kits together. But it does fall on staff to, to do that, and, you know, we're, we're back to full staff, but we're also very busy at the desk again and back to higher demand. So having that time off of desk, you know, they, they do get it, but it's figuring out also a balance too, in order to put those types of things together. Um, also, she's looking at other ways to have more access. I know that it, they usually go out at 10:00 AM, that, that notice, so we, her and I talked about different times that we do certain amounts and then put them at different times of the day so that there's a different opportunity perhaps for someone to grab it. Maybe you're in a meeting as a mom at 10:00 AM, but at 7:00 o'clock, maybe, you know, that's a better time for you to maybe go in and potentially get one. So those are some of the, um, points that we had in our meeting, so I just wanted to let you know that I did follow up. And I'll be able to give you some more information. I want her, based on the things that I heard, I wanted her to go back and think about how we might be able to improve and make some, make some changes.
I appreciate that. Um, man, okay. I want to make sure I'm not talking out of turn. Now, that's really good information. It sounds like, um, you got a good analysis, but there's some hope, um, at the same time. And I, who knows? One thought, you know, I got this green bag staring at me and also Debbie's offer of, let me know what you need.
Right.
Who knows if that's a great partner that might be able to help too?
Absolutely.
So that's just a thought.
Yes.
But I do appreciate the full, the full report.
You're welcome.
Um, and I will pass it on to those, I know that, that there's, um, work being done.
Yep.
Um, all across the board, and we're gonna see some different, um, options.
But we did hear that definitely, we appreciate that they're in demand. That's the greatest thing, so.
It's a good thing.
How we can, how we can meet that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, and now is time for our first public comment. And in order to hear all citizen comments at a reasonable hour, the Library Board requests that speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question and answer session. However, it's an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the Library Board. Citizens must state their first, last name and address. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Yes.
My name is Venkatesh Reddy Tarla. I am a 33-year Michigander and 24 years Novi student. And I'm very, very happy, and I want to thank our school and our, uh, library and our civic center and, uh, city council. It has been a fantastic journey, and I could not have traded any other place in the entire world, including my own village background. So, uh, and you guys are fantastic seven here, I mean, super seven. Super seven prestige. And there were four here, obviously two students and two of you, fantastic four. There were four fantastic audiences. Now there are two and me. And we are Novi, four letters, new original value increment. That's how I, I, I take the Novi ads. It's number six, they say it's a sixth railway station. But anyway, I am also, I like the, by the way, the, the pig in the, the green bag. I was going to ask them, but they left. And, uh, in this, there is inform, inspire, and glue. So considering the Novi four letters, fantastic four and all that, so this long time back, I was in this board meeting also, I just suggested the fourth, the fourth word. The student mentioned that word, involve. And I was thinking about interact. And I think I even suggested invite. So four letters would be good for the logo. That is just a suggestion. I don't know, uh, I'm finished with three minutes, or do I have? Oh, I can't see that. I can't see anything.
One more minute.
One more minute, very good. So good. So I also wanted to mention some other thing was, uh, I did share a presentation, uh, in the library with the help from our program director, Gail, and I also interacted with Julie, uh, a long time back, and again, good day. Um, I just want to share the four, uh, 11 keywords. Save, support, protect, direct, expand, transform, confirm, excel, e, merge. Those are 10 keywords for the management or anything that we do. Uh, and the 11th one is, I learned in the last two, two months in my workplace, production. So I changed that to produce, because we are using save, support, the word. So inspire, I mean, the produce, and then the fourth word, almost done, is continue to improve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak? All right. Seeing none, we'll move ahead with the President's Report. So I don't have much to say other than I, as summer draws to a close, and it has immediately come to a close here. I would like to take a moment, actually, just to acknowledge, um, the multitude of library activities. Not that there's been more activities in the summer, but, um, the activities that have taken place outside of the library itself and outside of our board meetings and here at the Civic Center. The Summer Reading Program, um, was truly remarkable. It registered over 2,000, um, people in the program and 38,000 books. Can you imagine? I mean, 38,000 books were read during that time. And maybe those books would not have been read had it not been for the Summer Reading Program. You know, staff secured some great prizes, and whether you know it or not, and I'm sure everyone here, I know that everyone here at this table is active in the community, and you've had to go out and get door prizes, and you've had to secure prizes for the various different activities that you're involved in. But it takes a considerable amount of time, and you have to use your wonderful art of persuasion to, uh, to acquire all these things. So, you know, the State Fair wristbands that they got, and the pizza coupons, and the gift baskets and more that were given out, we really appreciated. And all participants were invited to enjoy all the amenities at Paradise Park, uh, as a reward. So big thanks to the partnerships that we have, just as you've heard about Debbie and the partnership that we have with the Coalition. You know, Teresa and Jeff Wainwright and the Paradise Park Partnership is really, their hospitality has been such a great blessing for our, our library. So the Summer Concerts at Paradise Park, I mean, I've attended many of them and cheer danced, and you know, I didn't really do much more than that, but, um, the library patio events have been wildly popular too. So Director Farkas, staff, and trustee Dooley attended the formal gala at Fox Run last weekend, and the library sponsored the music, and trustee Dooley reported to me that she danced and had a wonderful time. Um, so, so many of these special activities, I guess what I want to say, take hours of preparation and supervising and everything else, and many- and many of these hours are off the work clock too, and I'm sure you all know that. So, many thanks also to friends of the library because we wouldn't be able to do many of these things if we didn't have the funding to help support those things. And all the special, you know, the special recognition too, of course, goes to our staff, our amazing staff, who continue to go above and beyond books, really, for sure. So, that's what I want to say about that because the summertime draws to a close. I think, you know, we're all gonna be getting active in holiday things, and so I just want to acknowledge how important all of these activities, how appreciative we are of all those activities that have taken place. And I know people have gone beyond their work hours to do them. I've also been asked to distribute some materials to you from Fox Run about their ECO initiative. And this journal features a myriad of ecosystems on the Fox Run campus. They are so involved in supporting the wetlands and the woodlands, and they're inviting you all to go and visit. You know, they have benches and everything where you can enjoy the ecosystem, and it's quiet back there in the back part of the property where a lot of these things are taking place. But they really have built, developed a wonderful partnership or a feeling so that the people that are in the apartments there actually can go outside and feel, hear the birds singing and see the deer, and, you know, everything is all protected there. So, they wanted you to have, the committee wanted you to have this booklet or this journal to kind of explain to you some of the initiatives that they're doing. So, I'll see you all at Fox Run one of these days when you get over there at some point in time, so.
I'll be there too.
Yeah. As a resident, maybe, right? Okay, so without further ado, we'll go on to the treasures report. Okay, any questions? All right. Seeing none, then we'll go on to the director's report.
With a very raspy voice from going to lots of events in the last seven days.
Too many concerts for you.
Yes. The gala with Fox Run is what kicked it off, and then we had Elvis, and then, yes, a concert last night. I don't have much of a voice left, so I apologize. Page 34 is always important to me tonight because we have a number of staff for the month of October that I am going to recognize for years of service. So, Barbara Kowski, head of information technology, 25 years. Pat Ameriscontry, support services clerk, 20 years. Kit Ming Tang, support services shelver, 14 years. Kristen Abbott, support services supervisor, 13 years. Linda Bruin, information services librarian, 13 years. Steve Pelizi, information services sub-librarian, 10 years. Emily Miller, information services sub-librarian, two years. Latanya Phillips, information services sub-librarian, two years. Emily Lankar, support services clerk, one year. Gabby Standja, support services clerk, one year, and Austin Webberly. Yes, Austin Webberly, support, no, I take that back. That is incorrect. I apologize. That is Andrew, I have the wrong name. It's Andrew, and I need to go back. So, if I can bring that back to you next month, I don't have Andrew's last name with me, but that is an incorrect name. I must have been thinking about Austin, and he's one of our supervisors, so when I, that is my error for putting it in, but it is Andrew. So, let me make sure that we can recognize him next month, if you don't mind. It is his first year, and it's, he's one of our shellers, so I'll get back to you on that. You do see a photo from the gala. Just a huge thank you to the Fox Run family, is what I'll call them, because they truly embrace us when we go over there, and we did have a great time. We danced with them, we ate with them. It was just, they were fabulous. And it really gave us a chance by bringing in, you know, the entertainment and the sponsor in that way for us to be able to, you know, to engage with them. We get a chance. They're very big supporters of the library. You know, they're, we host book clubs for them and get books over there. Just, they come to a number of our programs. In fact, a number of them Tuesday night were at Fox or at Paradise Park. So, very, very excited that, you know, we've been able to build that relationship with them and know that they have different needs, and we've been trying very hard to meet those needs. I know that I have, Sarah Vander, one of our librarians, is gonna be looking to take over virtual reality again over to them in the winter. And, you know, just finding unique ways, knowing that they'll probably hunker down a little bit and not go out as much from their campus when it comes to the winter, and then finding ways that we can provide some outreach to them and connect. But we also, I know I mentioned Fox Run, but we do it also for Anthology and Rose Court and Meadowbrook. In fact, I had the pleasure of being over at Meadowbrook and hosting their book discussion for their afternoon discussion. We had 10 people in attendance, and they've got a great, great group, and I think they want to grow it because it's been a while. We, with our shortage, we didn't send over librarians through the summer, so we're just getting back with them. Ray Manila, our new librarian who's been hired full-time, is going to take on that role. So, I went over to introduce Ray to them and, you know, hear what they want to do. We do that every other month with Meadowbrook. So, you know, it's not just them, but we do once in a while just get a chance to, I'll call, you know, kind of test. And Fox Run is always willing to let us be testers with them. So, but then we'll take it on the road and do it with other organizations as well that meet the older adult needs. So, I did put in the letter that I read to you last month because I was so excited, but I wanted you to have it in writing so you could also read it again and enjoy that. Congratulations, because I think it's huge for all of us to be sharing. Other than that, I'm happy to take questions on the rest of the report before my voice goes.
Yes, trustee Mr.
Thank you for sharing all this. This is all like super happy news, and I have to say, this is a very nice-looking picture.
It is.
That's really cool. I wanted, you mentioned on the road, taking it on the road, and of course, Gabby, you know, that made me think about the on the road. Is there any plans on ever bringing that back?
There is, we already have one scheduled.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
What am I doing?
It's happening October 18th. It's a Tuesday. Yes.
And will this be the first one?
This is the first one coming back, and it's at the DIA.
Wow, okay, thank you. And then, how often do you think they'll be?
Usually, they're only fall and spring. We tend to do two a year.
And that'll be on like a bus, and they pay money?
Typically, yes. And it is a fundraiser. This one, DIA was actually bringing a lot of the costs, was handling a lot of the costs. So, to go on the trip, it's $25, which that's pretty minimal compared to usually the bus trip fee because you're typically going somewhere farther away, and lunch and activities that you'd pay tickets for is involved. But the DIA actually brought that in as gratis for some of it. So, yeah, really great way to start off with just a small fee of $25.
Yeah, there's no lunch included.
Right.
No lunch.
Yes.
But you bring your money and you eat your lunch that way.
They're giving you time to use the cafe, yes, and then go to their wonderful store.
Yeah.
And people like to shop. We know this group.
And this includes the Van Gogh.
But it's not the immersion. I want to make sure.
Oh, it's not?
Yeah, I want to make sure you understand. It's not, it's the actual paintings of Van Gogh. It's not the immersion.
Okay.
Yes.
I know that fills up really fast.
Yes.
What's the deadline on that?
I don't have it with me.
That's okay. It's okay.
But I can, I can send it out to you.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, like, I want to take my mom one day, so I'm just like, try to do that one day. She just turned 71.
Not a problem. Yep, I'll get it to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. You know, I'm talking about Fox Run. I just want to share with you something that has to do with the historical commission that's part of the library as well. And I received a call recently because I had presented the Wild Lake Amusement Park presentation at Fox Run. And during the presentation or after the presentation, one of the residents came up to me, he and his wife, and they saw themselves in the middle of the dance floor at the Wild Lake Amusement Park. There were 1,000 people on the dance floor. They were on a blind date, and they saw themselves in the middle of the photograph. And we had the photograph enlarged and framed and gave it to them because they were celebrating their 60th anniversary at the time. Now, this was some time ago, but this gentleman called me the other day, and he said, Walter Baniki is his name, and Mr. and Mrs. Baniki would like to come to the library next week. I mean, I'm really surprised that they're getting around as well as they are. I mean, they've been married for 60 years, which I don't, I mean, and the, I mean, it was amazing that he saw himself on the dance floor. Out of all the dances that we have shown at the Wild Lake Amusement Park, he saw himself. And he said, he even remembered what they'd been wearing, and he is writing a book. He's writing a story. So, he wants to come to the library this week and wants to see a couple other pictures of the Wild Lake Amusement Park and also share the part of his book that he's already written about his experiences in this region. So, just thought I'd share that with you. Something that, you know, you never know, the trickle-down effect sometimes of the programs that we do. And it's really amazing, some of the things that happen after some of these programs. So, I thought it was important to share with you at this time. So, okay, moving right along, we're gonna have our, yeah, yes, yes, yes.
So, what I wanted to point out was, the first day of school, I saw our attendance jump up to past 1,000. So, that was exciting because we constantly talk about, you know, trying to get more people back into our doors. My question is, how do we keep track of that? Is there the sensor?
We do.
Is someone clicking?
No, we actually have a sensor as you walk in the building.
I wasn't sure. I was like, how do we keep track of that?
So, we have a counter.
Okay.
Yep, that takes it.
But that was exciting, and I.
Well, and they, the kids have been, you know, there's a lot of them, and at 2:45, we are definitely very popular, and it's great to see them. We're working on some things for traffic flow when they're queuing up for the cafe because that is, when they first walk in, that's the first thing they want to do. They want to go to the cafe, they want to, you know, get in line, and they want to place an order, and then find somewhere to go in the building, you know, to hang out. And there's lots of options. There's our teen space. If they're ready to study, they go and sit there. The patio with good weather, obviously, they're going outside still. Second floor, quieter floor, so if they're really ready to study again or focus on homework, we'll have them go upstairs. But with so many of them coming in the building, we've, I ordered some new stanchions because it'll help them queue up with the cafe. We did move the cafe tables. The reason why was people weren't able to really sit and enjoy the tables because they were congregating. So, we moved them, and now we have people sitting right by the windows on the first floor, getting access to those tables and having better usage of them. So, just a couple of things that we've seen over the last two weeks with schools starting. Traffic flow, if I can tell parents, we're really appreciating that they're not using the library parking lot to pick up kids because it is quite a busy, you know, half hour, 45 minutes if you have that extra queuing in and driving in that they shouldn't be doing. So, we've seen that kind of go down, which is great. And then also, because of COVID the last two years, we hadn't been policing in the morning to let kids know that you have to buy a parking pass and park at their high school, not at the library. And they were trying to get out of that. So, we've put nice little reminders that you can't park here, you do need to get your parking pass and park in the designated spots that you're supposed to with school, and some staff too. So, that's, what that's done though is it's freed up, you know, you could have 30 kids that last minute decide they're gonna park in the library lot and then run into school in the morning.
Right.
And we're watching that right now because then that's 30 kids that then need to get out of the parking lot, and it creates more congestion. So, just trying, really trying to help them and navigate them and, you know, give them some expectations. Mrs. Yolanda Hackett Dennis is back at Teen Space, and Lindsay's been working with her very closely, you know, just to see the best format of the room and how to make it, you know, accessible and useful to the teens as well. So, it's been a great two weeks. The kids really have been great, you know, when we ask them to bring a different voice sometimes because there's so many of them, and they do. I have three kids, and they love to be in groups. They come with their friends. They don't come one by one. So, they're usually in a group of six to nine. That can get a little loud, you know, and so it's, and I appreciate they're very respectful. They, you know, they take our cues with, hey, if you've got your drinks already, go find another spot, or if you're ready to move along, thank you so much, or there's Teen Space. So, just trying to help navigate them. We also have the guest relations monitor position still open, and that will be helpful once we fill that as well because that is what some of the managers in my facilities team are doing now from 2:45 to 3:15 is we're having a presence down there to help them a little bit and to keep things moving and to help with some of, you know, the voices and things. So, it's been great.
That's awesome. You go first.
If that's okay. Go ahead.
I know my high schooler, you know, he was not excited about the school, but he was very excited about the teen space. So, he's already been there for a few days, and I have to say, you know, as a mom, like, working and stuff, and, you know, he's got, he gets out of the school and then say he has another thing he has to go to. Such a wonderful, safe space for him to be there, and we know he's safe. So, I'm very thankful for that. I know all parents are. And then the second thing I wanted to say, he specifically, he mentioned a week ago about, you know, Ms. Julie is always there handing out, you know, taking care of not only the staff and the kids. And he said you were handing out like, you know, like the snacks or whatever, or water or something. So, I really appreciate everything that you do, Julie, and the staff, and I mean.
Lindsay, Ms. Lindsay and Ms. Yolanda really are, they're the heart of Teen Space, so, and they're the faces in there. I try to get down there more for the, more for the traffic control. I think they appreciate if I will do that and handle that, and then they can be the greeters and give out popsicles and stuff that, yes, that's happening. So, but I appreciate the comments because we are just, we want to build relationships with our teenagers. I, you know, you know this. I have three at home. I know how they are. I know, I know how they act. I know what they need. They don't need to be talked down to. They don't need to be, you know, voices raised and stuff. That's not our job. Our job is to help them move around and make them feel comfortable, but also sometimes they do need some direction. And, but it's been very good. I also would not want to see these teens be turned away and not use our building. So, we are. It's a unique situation we're in for where we're located that, you know, there's a lot of public libraries that if you don't have a high school, you're not gonna have that. And I don't want to call it a problem, but you're not gonna have that opportunity for service, is what it is, to be servicing these teens, and we do. So, we've, we have tried to be very proactive and positive when we can to provide a good environment for them.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. You had mentioned guest relations monitor. Is that the same as the parking lot monitor? Did the name change, or is that something different?
It used to be building monitor.
Building monitor, thank you.
So, we changed it because it's a lot of interaction with guests, and we know that. So, it is going out and enforcing a little bit of parking if you're seeing it because you can stand at the main doors and kind of see what's going on, but then you also have the cafe, and you've got that directs line of sight, and then you can see Teen Space as well and if kids are going in or if Yolanda needs anything, if she needs a backup. So, it's a good place to be in that lobby, that first, that first half hour to 45 minutes of the shift is really, is really being a face. And that's how, when we looked at putting it back out, you know, to fill it, we looked at it more with customer service in mind because we know that a lot of it is interacting with the guests of the library, and not just the teens. It's interacting with everyone.
That's great. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
I just have one more thing. So, I don't know if everybody does know about this, but the Michigan Activities Pass. When I was looking at the report, 55 people used it, and I was hoping that maybe we could promote it a little bit more. If you don't know what it is, this is what's really amazing about our library and the library system in general is you can check out to be able to go to a museum and some other historical locations that I didn't even know about. And so, I just thought that maybe that was another thing that we could promote just because it helps people be able to go for free and takes down that barrier of access if they can't afford a ticket to go somewhere. So, I thought that that was pretty awesome. I just wanted to point that out. I was like, oh, 55 people.
Thank you.
So, it was good.
Yeah. And I also want to point out, from Sue Johnson's presentation last month, I incorporated some information, her slides, and she did look back in her QuickenBooks to give you that $216,000 figure for what they have given at least since.
2013, I think.
Yeah, 2013, nine years back, she was able to go.
That's amazing.
That that's what they have gifted the library with different types of programming, events, furniture, iCube, you name it. So, that's a lot of money that they have generously donated back to the library. You're welcome.
Okay, anything else? Okay, anything else? All right, moving on to the second audience participation. So in order to hear all citizen comments at a reasonable hour, the library board requests that speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question-answer session. However, it's an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the library board. Citizens must state their first, last name and address. Is there anyone that wishes to speak?
I'm Megatelli Tharla, 33 years from Michigan, 24 years Ohio resident, 37 years and eight months and 22 days, today is 22nd into information technology, and 25 years I've been into management position. So I did take a quick look, kind of like I suggested before, I got back with the four letters and I have ACGT, ACGT four letters, ACGT report that we have been talking about, like you erroneously added some names, you change, you have to change that. So that is C, one is C. So we add, we change, we grow, we transform, that's ACGT. Those are DNA bases in our body that makes up genes, genes make up chromosomes, chromosomes make up ARDAS, ARDAS make up links, links make up body, and all that. Anyway, so under a direct report, there are seven items, I noticed. So maybe I'm suggesting eight, I don't know too much for you, Julie. Julie has been fantastic. Every time I walk into her office, she welcomes me, okay, no problem, no prior appointment, nothing like that. Three times I did that. Last, I don't know. But anyway, and I also noticed there are eight committee reports. So obviously, you can have eight items. So that is, I'm talking about ACGT report, or you can say 4E report, effectiveness of our program, our library, efficiency of our library, easy use of our library, and extending happy outcome of our library. Those are four. So 4E report, I call it. Some people call it ACG report, some people call it 4C report, whatever. Something that I wanted to say. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go on. Are there any chairs that have something to add that was not already in the packet? Anyone have anything they wish to say? Okay, Member Dooley.
Just really quick, if there's any trustees that want to indicate what programs they've attended, I apologize that I didn't send out my reminder email to get into the packet. We've been extremely busy with multiple committees. For example, events marketing hasn't met yet, because we've been doing strategic planning. And that's, that's all on me. So if anybody wants to take this moment to let everyone know, we can put it in the minutes.
So first of all, I, I am so grateful for you, because I was sitting here after everything started and after you already asked for additions and we were talking about hair and stuff and I'm like, oh no, I was supposed to tell Kat. And then, yeah, so thank you. Yeah, that's okay. So two, two events I want to highlight that I was able to attend in September that tie into what the library is doing. The first one was the NEF Pancake Breakfast. Julie was there as well, feeding my son unlimited Dum Dum Suckers. I have a picture to prove it. We actually gave you that for the packet. But no, smiling the whole time, on her feet the whole time, and it was a, it was a long day. We started at, well, I didn't get there at 7:30, but some people got there at 7:30 in the morning and it ended at 11:30. So it's a great partnership between the schools, the community and our library was there representing, which was really encouraging. And I was like, where are all these wrappers coming from? His mouth was just full of like Dum Dum Sucker sticks. He like, yeah, I was like, I don't know what's going to happen later, all the sugar. But she just smiled and said, here you go. It was a sight to see. But it was a great event and it was good representation for, you know, for everything that we try to do, right? So I was able to attend that. The other thing, this one was online, so it's nice to have an in-person online. And this was the event that Gail actually hosted this week with the Indian, Indian cooking and spices. So I was able to find out more about cayenne pepper than I knew. It's very interesting. So I'm sure there's a lot more for me to learn, but I, I enjoyed it. And I like that we can go from like breakfasts to just learning about how foods can be medicinal in some ways and helpful to our bodies. So our library really does have everything. Those are the two things I was able to, to attend. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to say something that they've attended? I'll, if I can remember the title of it. I did fill in for Julie. Julie had asked me, or Director Farkas had asked me if, because of a conflict of too many activities going, I went in her stead to the Plymouth Library where they had a program. And the title was about book banning.
Oh, yeah.
Dr. Holly, Dr. Holly was the, and she had him in school. And so he was very, it was very interesting. And just to give you just an idea, what he said was, there are lists out there that are sort of designed maybe to scare people that these books have been banned. Very few books have actually made, fit the criteria for actual banning. There are books challenges going on and there are book challenges and perhaps we'll be seeing more of those, you know, because it's a politically charged time before elections and sometimes that's the new thing. But it was very, very interesting and, you know, I'll be glad to share additional information at some time. But I think we're doing a good job, because he suggested all the things that you need to do when you do get a challenge. And the things that we're doing were all of the things that he mentioned, you know, and having a policy in place. That's really important, so that you don't have, you know, have other kind of crises under these challenges. So we're doing all of the things that he recommended. I wanted to say, well, I think there were about 130 people there, which was a good attendance. And most of them were women, I'll say, just so you know. Not sure why. Older women too, by the way. Older women. So, but anyway, I was one of them. And it was very interesting. So I, thanks for the opportunity to do that. And anybody else that gets a chance to attend something like that, please bring back the information. We appreciate it. We can't all be everywhere, that's for sure. So any other committees that wish to report right now? Okay, well, I know we'll, we'll hear something about diversity here. I mean, we'll hear something about the library board action thing that we're going to be taking up here shortly. So seeing no other comments, then we're going to move forward to the library board action. First of all, I just want to say before we actually take the motion, I want to say that, how appreciative all of us are that the Strategic Planning Committee has listened to, I mean, I know it was a little, it was a little crazy, the last meeting, when we asked them to go back and come back with additional information. That was our request. And they have been very diligent in going through it. When we received the packets, I mean, it was a little, it was a little horrifying, actually. When I thought, am I going to read through all this? And I know, I scanned it all. But I know they went through all of that information. So, you know, I'm just appreciative and I want to offer our appreciation to that committee for being so diligent and coming back with their, with their suggestion. So I will entertain a motion to enter into a contract with Rethinking Libraries for strategic planning purposes with a not-to-exceed cost of $23,665, requiring milestone updates from the firm to coincide with quarterly payments.
Make that motion.
Make a motion. Member Dooley is making a motion. Second, Member Guramurti. Okay, we have a second. And we have a motion. So discussion now. And I would ask, first of all, though, if we can have Chair Bartlett maybe share some of the information with us and then we'll entertain other information from people.
Okay, well, first I'd like to thank my colleagues for long hours and, and multiple meetings between, between our last, our last session. We did work through a lot of different issues. We worked through the entire list that I went through last, last time. And also have a list of questions that we got to the two finalists, walking through what they're, what they're offering. The, you know, both looks like they used a lot of boilerplate and even said so in some of their comments, that they used a lot of boilerplate and that some of what we were reading, and boilerplate tends to be very wishy-washy and very non-committal, you know, and so forth. In meeting with RT, in talking with RTL and going through the situation with RTL, they are the highest priced, as we mentioned, but they were the most thorough, going through all their, all their data. The, we cleared up quite succinctly that this is going to be a fixed-price bid, which was one of my main, main issues, that we get to the end of this and find that we got an hourly bill looking at us. It is a fixed-price bid. It is still the highest bid. They made a good case for their retreat, which was the highest cost item, which was one of my issues before. It looks like it's an integral part of what they do. I just wanted to let my fellow board members know that we are going, this is going to be, require a day during the work week of some type of meeting. We did discuss with them that it'll be one day, because I don't think it's going to be working out to two days. And it's going to be our, our responsibility along with the library to be sure that we are, you know, we have attendance for that day. Because that's going to, that's what's going to make it, make it worthwhile. Looking at their, further looking at their proposal compared to the other, the library IQ, they have a lot of data that they are going, that they basically make available to us, all the raw data. So should we take the questions and the information they have, if we want to massage it and look at, you know, what the public said, you know, down the road, it's our data to keep and, you know, it's something that we can, we can take a look at for possibly other initiatives. We also cleared up the ongoing yearly contracts with them. They will assist us with the plan for the first year. They will be available for brief phone support in subsequent years, but will not take an active role in putting together the entire plan, which means our costs, we're not signing up for an annual cost, which I was concerned about. So all in all, they are still the, they were still the top candidate. Also, since we received the packet, they have also been chosen by Ypsilanti and Sterling Heights to do similar work. They were the persons with the most experience in Michigan beforehand. They continue to be so. And in fact, they are probably are more, they are going to be more attuned to the demographics of this area of the state than, than the other candidate. And that's part of why we went forward and said, okay, we'll take the not-to-exceed at the high price. The only other thing that in the, and it gets a little bit long in the motion, the only other thing we didn't cover in the sessions was, they require quarterly payments. And we want those quarterly payments to be based on milestones and where they are in the project, so that along we can see, okay, there's progress being made, we're happy with the progress, we're happy with where they're at. So in the negotiations, we asked that it be fixed price and we negotiate where the price points are where we have to give them money. And that's the basic behind the proposal.
Okay, okay. Once again, I know there was a lot of time and effort put into that. We appreciate it. So, Member Guramurti.
So I just wanted to thank, you know, our group very much, because it was an amazing drill that we went through, I would say. You know, just, you know, and thanks to Julie for all the coordination and getting us what we wanted. So the questions and the responses from both the teams, it made us, you know, we had a follow-up meeting to go through our, you know, what we wanted to conclude and propose. It was very clear, just how you had heard, you know, the data was very clear, like the samples and how they had explained and the responses. They shared their findings book, that, one of their findings book, which was very thorough, because we use the findings in order to come up with our goals. The second thing was the breakdown on the deliverables and work tasks was really to the T in their response. And then how they conduct the stakeholder meetings, they just was, you know, they knew what they were doing and they had different ideas of how to include the audience in our final retreat and so forth. And, you know, the follow-up that they're going to do every year. So I personally feel they are very good, you know. I'm excited about this whole strategic, you know, initiative that we are going to do and what we are, we will be able to do based on what we find. So I thank the team very much and Julie.
Okay, yes, Member Dooley.
So all of us on the committee, we're all thanking each other, but I do also want to offer my thanks as well, just because it really was very comprehensive. And I know Kathy, you said, I'm sorry that you guys had to go back, but actually it was a good thing for us to go back. And so I wanted to thank Chair Bartlett to call into those questions and to bring those things so that we could go back, because we needed to clarify a lot of that. Also, I just wanted to let the board know that we do have monies already designated for the strategic plan. We have about 15K this budget year and we're going into budget session for the next budget year. I have a feeling, even though I know Julie wants this quicker, but I do have a feeling, depending on the timeline of where rethinking already is, that this could go into the next budget year. Therefore, I just wanted to give that confidence, hopefully, that we should be able to cover everything thoughtfully with the monies that we have. We did talk about that together and we did play devil's advocate with each other. We just really wanted to workshop everything before this was brought back to you. But we really are confident that rethinking is the best choice. And so we do hope that we have everyone's support tonight.
Okay, trustee Chair Curry.
Yeah, I just want to, since I'm not on the committee, let me thank the committee from outside. No, I'm glad you guys worked hard to come to a consensus. And it sounds like we're going to get a pretty good report. Following up on trustee Dooley's question, does this require a budget amendment this year?
I'll be able to know more once we actually sit down with the firm and try to figure out what their timelines are for payment. So it, it might, but I don't know, you know what I mean? I'm not, I'm not for sure.
Even within our procedures, are we then obligating a future board to a certain amount of spend?
Oh, well, with you, with you approving this like this now, will it automatically be put in? So I will allocate differently for the mid-year to the end of the year. And then based on the timeline that the vendor gives us, we might have to put something in for the, for the next year, for '23, '24. We might have to put something in.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. But I just, I, I don't want to answer yes, because it automatically, we only budgeted 15,000. So it will cost more, depending on how we pay out this year. I'll have to find out once I know their timeframe better.
And I guess, yeah, it's the general rule about multi-year contracts, is are you obligating future?
Oh.
And boards are taking away their power when you sign them, right?
No, no, no. No, that, that's nothing to be worried about. Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay, yes, Member Bishir.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, well, I guess I'm, I'm following up with a thank you. After Shreedy. Yeah, I want to thank the committee too. And I want to be specific about that, like, I was really impressed, trustee Bartlett, because that was not an easy position to be in, to take something that I think you did have buy-in in and to say, wait a minute, y'all, honestly, I don't think we should say okay? That's hard. That's, that's really hard. And I thought that was a brave move, but I think it's good for our library. And I love that you all supported that and then went back and worked really hard, obviously, on getting us a lot of answers. I was extremely impressed with the little Q and A and color coding in the back. I mean, this is fantastic in a month's time. Like, it's, it's really commendable, seriously. Because y'all got jobs and other committees and other obligations that you are involved in and families. You know, the work that we do here on this board is not paid. So I just, I know that you put a lot into it, so, good job. Thank you.
Member Stirring.
Likewise, maybe not quite as lengthy, but thank the committee for all the work that they did and the questions that they raised last month, which were good questions. And we're able to, within the committee, really resolve, resolve all those issues and bring us back a proposal, so I'm certainly supporting it.
Okay.
I don't want to forget to thank Julie. Julie is the one that put all this together and also herded us as well. I want to make sure that I say that out. I, I want to make sure that I say that out loud, so thank you.
I'm happy to. I'm very excited about this process.
Okay, well, we've all said thanks, so that's good. That's very good. All right, I guess we are with no further discussion. I'll ask for you to call the roll. Number, the secretary will call the roll.
Trustee Guramurti?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Chair Currie?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Very good. That was easy. And a second motion here is to approve the collection development policy draft. First of all, let me ask, is this, we're going to be approving the draft and then will it come back to us again?
Well, that's up to you tonight because, because it is draft one for the whole board to be looking at. However, it has been looked at by two committees and staff. So it's up to you. I mean, if you have read through it and you feel confident and comfortable with it, you know, that typically I bring it back. But I, again, it's had many eyes from a number of the board members. And I would be comfortable if it did get approved tonight. It, it is ready. So it, it is just up to the board, but yeah, I, I feel very confident.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion then to approve the collection development policy, draft policy. Member Stirring, would you like to make that motion? And member Guramurti, you want to do second? All right, now discussion. All right, member Chair Currie.
I wanted to give you clarification, but you can.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, so I actually wanted to ask the rest of the trustees if it would be okay for this to be tabled for one month. The reason is it's a pretty extensive set of rules. I was actually traveling this week and there's, I'm not on any of the committees that got a chance to see it. And as trustee, or chairman Crawford said, that you attended the thing about the collections and all those, all those issues which are pretty big deals right now are in here. And so if I have some time, I'd prefer to go through and then submit my questions to Julie and everyone else here. And so that, instead of us getting caught up in a lot of semantic arguments today.
And we do have a policy already in place right now, so we're not working without something, just so you know.
Okay, member Dooley.
I, I wanted to confirm, Julie, that this is a culmination of kind of combining all the other policies that are in the packet.
It is.
Okay.
When I, in fact, since I'll be bringing it back next month, I won't bring all the other policies behind it because I'll just bring it as the second draft and any revisions that would go from there, should there be any or any questions.
Right.
But yes, there are a number, C1 through nine are all policies that we've now looked at as a more comprehensive collection development policy. And we have put all of those smaller policies into the larger policy. It just made more sense because when you're dealing with materials anyways, you probably should have it all with you than to have to find it specifically to one purpose. Because it all falls under the same auspice, to be quite honest. So that's part of it, was to combine them all, but then also to add a lot of great information and new things related to diversity specifically that are called out for the collection.
And then also, this policy references ALA.
Which it did before, but yes, it does, correct.
So we're kind of making that a little bit more transparent in this particular policy.
Well, it always has already, but there were some updates to it as well. But what I wanted to do is if ALA changes something, we reference it, but it's not embedded in the policy. So I don't have to keep bringing it back to you. So page is one, if you look, it's only four pages that you're approving. But I'm giving you all of the background and the forms and everything that would be associated with it that get mentioned as well.
Thank you.
But yes.
I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that.
Yeah, it's pretty extensive. It truly is. I can understand your point, trustee Chair Currie.
Okay.
So I guess.
Well. Yeah. I guess too, you know, I just want to remind members too, that if you have questions about any of the policies, everything, it's just fine just to call Julie and say, you know, I need a clarification or convince me how this works or something or other, to please do that so that we don't have to go back, you know, at, at times like this. So I think it's, you know, most of us have looked at it and I'm fine with it the way it is. But I don't want members to feel uncomfortable reading through the whole thing and feel like they still have questions. So I guess.
And I apologize. I literally came in a red eye this morning, so.
Your eyes look normal.
The miracle of eyes.
Okay, well, what's your pleasure?
So I guess.
Well, you have a motion.
So I guess the question is, I think the motion to table or to delay? Or postpone, sorry, yeah, right. The most, that's a subsidiary motion, but it's in order, right? So, so I'd like to make a motion to postpone this item until next month, next month's meeting.
Okay, well, what are we doing about the motion we've got on the floor?
This, this will supersede that.
This will supersede that, okay, okay. Okay, you want a second? A second? Member Bartlett, are you seconding it? Okay, all right. So we have a motion, we have a second to postpone the discussion or postpone the motion, correct?
Yes.
Is that what you'd like to do and bring it back next month, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion about this? Yes.
Did you have your hand up too? Okay. Yeah, I, I think earlier, there was a question asked of you, Julie, about like, is this draft just to look at right now or is this to, to definitely approve? And I think you said, well, if you need more time, that's fine. But if you don't, I'd love to approve it tonight. So I guess I'm wondering how that ties in as well. Like, does it need to be postponed or is this, because it is as a draft, I guess is my thought process.
Well, it's draft one for you. Typically, this board has appreciated two readings of it.
Right.
So this is the first time I'm bringing it draft one.
Right.
Right.
So that's why I'm just wondering, I'm like, do we need to have another? I'm still learning.
This board can decide to approve though at any time. But I, but there's been a, a practice of bring back, you know, let you have it for the first time. Have conversation and time to look over it and then it, it comes back. You don't have to do that, but I've always done it. So I called it draft one because I didn't know if I'd be bringing it back again for another time. So it's, yeah.
That's perfect.
It's the first time you're all seeing it.
That's helpful. I just wanted to finish up really quick. I'm so sorry, I know. I wanted to clarify that really quick with Julie, but then I was just going to say. So from, from my standpoint, with everything said, I'm okay with it going another month. I understand. It's, it's a thick document. I, I want to encourage you that we, I was one of the committees and we did look it over a lot. But I also understand having that comfort level for yourself as well, so. And, and I, and I have to say, it's a public meeting. The public gets to hear your thoughts too. So if you feel like you want to publicly say you need more time, that's okay too. That's why we're here, so I'm okay with that.
Member Stirring.
Well, I, I'm comfortable with tabling, tabling this matter or postponing this matter for another month to make sure that everybody's had a chance to really read it carefully and feel, feel comfortable with it. At the same time, I think whether we, if we postpone it for a month and we adopt it next month, that really puts us at the same place as if we had adopted, done it at two readings, you know, tonight and another month. So I don't think this will ultimately delay in any way the adoption of this, whatever form it may take. And we currently have policies in place, so I'm certainly comfortable waiting another month to address this.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak? All right, seeing none, we have a motion on the floor and would you read the motion back to us, please?
The motion is to table the collection development policy, draft one, and to bring it back at the next board meeting.
Okay, very well. Now we can call the roll.
Trustee Dooley?
No.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Chair Currie?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchner?
Yes.
Trustee Guramurti?
Yes.
Motion passes six one.
Okay, thank you. And moving on, the motion to approve the food policy. And this is the draft. This is the first draft, correct?
It is, yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Member Mitchner, would you like to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, member Chair Currie, you want a second?
Yes, it was shortened about food, so I made time to read it.
I'm sure, I'm sure, yes.
You heard that one first, right?
Now, discussion, discussion. Anybody have discussion?
Do I get it first since I did the motion? Is that how that goes?
You want what?
I said I get it first because I made the motion, right? That's how that goes, right, Tom? I'm trying to learn. Okay. So this is, this looks interesting. I'd love some more feedback on it. I, I wasn't, unless I missed something in my brain was too full, I don't think I was a part of any of the groups that looked at this. So, okay, thank you. I'm like, oh no.
This has actually come up very quickly because of the cafe, the usage of the building since our teams have returned. And the fact that before COVID, there wasn't an opportunity for Uber Eats and DoorDash and things like that, and that all came with COVID. And so we're experiencing that now, even with having a cafe. Sometimes someone doesn't want to eat from there. That's okay, their choice. But we've had to figure out how then do we handle, you know, different types of food coming to the building in a new way. So this is why you have a lot of new language compared to the old, which is the, you know, the new policy draft compared to the old one on page 106, that speaks to, and I had, my staff and I have actually sat down and we've put some things together. So this is, this has been staff reviewed based on what they're experiencing and what we're trying to accomplish, you know, with not keeping someone from having DoorDash because we really can't. We have no way to police and monitor.
Right.
What we can do though is we can try to let, you know, DoorDashes and stuff know that they can't be in an emergency parking area and in the standing and, you know, they can't park in a handicap space either to wait for someone to go out and get their food. Well, and those are some of the things that are happening. And so if, if I'm, if I see this and my managers are seeing, you know, or food being ordered, which is fine because we know we're in that age now of doing that, they can at least have a policy with them and present it and say, listen, you might be called again. And there's going to be lots of people that are, if we can also talk to the person who's done the ordering, you know, the adult or, or teen, then we can let them know some of the ramifications of and reasons why where we put some policy in place. We've literally had someone walk in, an Uber person, Uber Eats, and literally come in and goes, well, I got paid, here's the food, and they leave it on the counter. Well, we can't deal with that. That's not our job. And we don't do overheads. Overheads are for emergency purposes only in our building. We would be, and I, I'm just going to say it, we would be Walmart. Hello, aisle five, all day long. If we were, if we were to announce the things that we could be announcing at the library, and that's not our purpose. So we have gotten a little specific on some things because we actually need to. I need some way to either work with the guest who might be doing this or working with the person who might be dropping off to know, hey, man, we're not in charge of your food. You know, and we're also not going to take responsibility for it. We don't want to accept someone's food. That's, that's really not a good thing. Well, it's, yeah, it's a liability, but, so we, we don't. But at the same time, we have to figure out how to work through this.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so this is first draft. I mean, I have a policy in place. We're working through it if you need more time. But I do need you to understand that these have been some new things coming this year because of just the way we've been dealing with food service and, and delivery type stuff. People are used to that kind of service.
Okay, that's super helpful. I didn't know all that.
Yes.
So I, I wanted clarification. I have, like, just hearing you, it makes me have like more questions and more thoughts and scenarios.
Absolutely.
I know that one of the things that changed, and I think it was pre-COVID, but definitely in place after because of staffing issues and people getting sick, et cetera, is that the, there's, the hours vary for the cafe a little different than how they used to be.
Absolutely.
Is there any chance of that going back to how it used to be or extending?
In terms of working on the weekends and stuff?
Yeah.
Right now, they're still having staffing issues.
They are?
Yes.
Okay.
So I, I know they can commit right now to Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Okay.
I would love to engage that further. In fact, Building and Grounds is meeting in the first week of October to look at the contract because there, there's been some delays with the school and they now have, their one superintendent is not, is not available. So, so.
Oh, right.
So it's been delayed. And so we're working, I'm not worried about the contract, do you mean? I mean, I, I want to get a new contract in place, but these are things that have to be talked about. And I do believe you have to set a policy first for them to, for me to share with them where you're going, where your direction is. So, yeah, I don't know. I, I can't speak to their hours. I would love to ask and, and ask them to work more, but they are running into some staffing issues. And so that is what, that is what plays into the weekends especially. Someone at the library and, and for a few hours studying and then they're hungry.
Yep.
So, and, and so I'm not saying I don't want DoorDash because I don't think we can do that anymore, to be quite honest. But we've got to figure out what that means when we handle it.
Yeah, no, this is super helpful. Thank you. I appreciate all of the feedback you just gave. And I, and I think from, speaking for myself, I can imagine how that's a lot of extra work for your staff and volunteers. But I can also imagine how the patrons that come in that are used to the cafe are like, well, I'm hungry and I, I got to get stuff done too.
Right, totally.
Or even, even your volunteers and staff as well. So it's, it's definitely a pickle. And of course, like, you know, there's a resignation from superintendent that dealt with the building issue. So there's a space there where who knows when you'll get feedback there.
Right. I, I do, I have heard that they are working on it though, even with that position. So it's being, it's being looked at. It's just going to take a little time.
Yeah.
So, but I'm not worried about the contract. I mean, we'll get another one in place. I know they're interested.
Sure. And so that, so for me, all of that information was really helpful. I hope me digging deeper was helpful for everybody else.
Thank you for asking.
You're welcome. So that being said, I want to, I don't, I feel like I'm still processing a lot of information I just got, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
It's a lot and it's a big change. So please, if you can, in the next couple of weeks, if you have questions or anything that seems, you know, you have questions or the way it's written or anything like that, if you will send them to me, I can incorporate and see how with my committee, I might be able to do some changes and bring back something to you in another draft.
Yeah, thank you. So, so I'll just close up my discussion piece with, I, I think for me, I would like, I'd like to look over this draft and I'd like to be able to have those questions and think and also look at maybe getting a, a new opportunity next month. I don't know if that's called tabling or, I'm still learning, like I said, all this parliamentary stuff, but.
Well, we can do the same thing we did with the last draft.
Okay, right.
You know, we can make another motion, yeah, or change a motion.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to postpone, or I'll, I'll call it to postpone for study. We'll call it that and then bring it back next month.
You got it.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, we have a second here. Guramurti, seconded? Okay, any discussion about this motion? I would say, one thing I wanted to say though is that at this, with this food policy, I really rely a lot on what is going on, you know, with the staff and with you. I mean, even more than a lot of other things, we've really, we've really got to count on what the reality is at the front door. You know, what is happening. And I see this changing. It's probably going to morph, you know, continue to morph as new agencies and other things come online. You know, I can see us having to add additional things to this policy in the future. But I think, you know, there is sort of a sense of urgency to kind of get something in place soon because I'm sure you're dealing with this now and it's tough, yeah. Member Dooley?
I know that this is the motion to table, but I did want to say that I do appreciate the indication on the original policy, but also the new draft about food allergies. So with the schools, just so everybody knows, we have to, I, I have a son with food allergies. And so I kind of live this world a lot with regards to his safety. With the schools, they have to have us fill out an ADA form. And so that's something to just be aware of when we're looking at this policy, that it is considered in some, most cases, a disability. And if we're going to have food on the premises, especially at events, we just have to cover ourselves just to make sure that people are aware that we may or may not have food that's safe for them. Which is sad because I always want food that's safe for everybody, but there's a lot of. Which is sad, because I always want food that's safe for everybody, but there's a lot of allergies out there. The saving grace with having our partnership with the school though, with the cafe, is that it is run by Chartwells and they do have to follow what the schools follow with regards to school food service. So as someone who has a child with nut allergies, um, that makes me really happy. And so that's, that's just a good partnership that I wanted to emphasize. Right now, as the policy stands, I, I don't really have a problem with it, but I do understand and respect that we should look at it again, um, but yeah. So, I mean, if everybody wants to table it, we can table it, um, but I'm happy with as it is now.
Okay, anyone else? Member Sturridge?
I, I don't have a problem tabling it, but I also think I'd like to take this opportunity if some of us have comments now, to start that process. And, and sort of, I get, from a technical standpoint, if you table, you're not supposed to talk about the original motion.
Yeah.
And, and, and that, that way, I think we're kind of missing an opportunity here to talk about the things we know and like right now, with the idea that it doesn't have to be final, but, but we're postponing the whole thing for, for a month. And, and, you know, I, I would suggest, rather than tabling it, we look at it now, but we commit ourselves, this is draft one, and there's gonna be a draft two. And that way, we can talk about it tonight, and I do have some comments on it, and I think that would start the process, as opposed to waiting a month to start the process.
Some motion to postpone?
Thank you.
Yeah, I can't talk.
Okay.
Yes. I didn't ask for tabling.
No, you can.
Okay, uh, where are we then? Okay, we can still continue the discussion.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Okay, you said, you were Sturridge, you said you had additional.
Oh, okay. To, to be able to talk about it tonight, I am going to vote against the motion to postpone. And depending on what happens, I might propose a motion to have two readings of it. But I, I, I'm gonna vote against the motion to table, or against the motion to postpone. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, member Mitchner?
I have more than, I think your, your, um, thought might be fine with my thought. So if I hear you correctly, um, you're saying that you just want a second read before, and tell me if I'm, if I'm right, because I don't want to mess up through the chair. But it sounds like you want a second, you're okay with the second read, you just don't want to call it postponing. I didn't call it tabling, FYI, um, but is that correct?
I'm okay with a second read.
I'm okay with a second read as well. So I am more than happy to rephrase, and, and if you need me to, I don't know, I'm happy to do that. I just want another month to look it over and to understand and get some more clarification, that's all.
Might I suggest you just re, recall or, or take away the motion to, to postpone?
So, there, dear Chair, there's two motions actually right now. The original motion was to approve it.
Yeah.
And that had a second. Then there was a motion to postpone.
Right.
They can both be withdrawn by the motion makers and the seconders. And you can go back to square one, but at the end of the conversation, we would probably say, you should, you, you can either take no action, or you can do a motion to postpone, either, either one. But I, I guess.
Okay. I, I think the best thing to do, I mean, based on the conversation that we're having here, the best thing to do would be asking all the motion, the motion makers and the seconders to agree to, uh, drop their motion, correct?
Withdraw.
And if anybody has a problem with that, let me know now. I mean, otherwise, what we're gonna do then is we'll, we'll have time to discuss, but also we'll be able to bring it back as a second draft. The intent here is to give us enough time to take a look and also enough time for discussion. And then we will, it will come back next month for a vote, correct? Everybody's on board with that? Yes, member Dooley?
I just, uh, I just, I guess, yes, I hear what you're saying, but how did it play out with the other motion? Because I feel like this is a repeat, so I'm kind of confused why we can't.
Can I put out there the difference between a motion to table, which you don't discuss
Okay.
which is voted, and a motion to postpone, which can be discussed.
Thank you.
So.
I just needed that clarification.
Chair, you're correct, withdraw of motions with the support of the maker and the seconder, and then you're back to square one.
Okay.
We're back to si, square one, and actually, we cannot take, we don't have to take any action. We can just bring it back next month, okay?
Yes.
How about if we do that?
I'm fine with that.
Is everybody okay with it? Is anybody, I mean, anybody have a problem with draw, withdrawing their motions?
No, no problem.
No problem.
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, so, let's just not do anything.
But how do you discuss then, I guess, sorry?
Well, we can, we can still discuss it. You can, it's open for discussion.
Fully on the table.
Yeah. It's on the discussion, no. No, we don't, we're good. So, uh, member Sturridge, you had some.
I would like to, I would, I would like to discuss draft one.
Okay.
Um, I, I, first of all, I, I commend the staff, because they obviously made some very specific comments here, uh, which, which I for the most part support. Uh, the one comment that I had to make was the very first point, no food allowed on the second floor of the library, including local history and iQ rooms. I, I believe that's inconsistent with the policy, or what goes on right now, if the library itself or the friends host a party there, because there is generally food on the second floor.
There is, but that's a private event where we're not open to the public.
Um, is, I'm not so sure, I see that as part of the policy. It's just food in the library, it doesn't seem to say for non-public events.
Well, this only, the policies are only used when we're open to the public, for the most part. I mean, that's usually how they're used. If we have our own events, that's gonna be completely different. I don't want to muddy this, this is a public policy dealing with the public and how the, how the public would use us. So in a special event, we would use, we can use the library in, in any way we need to, Mark. This is just when you're dealing with the public, when we're open.
Well, my suggestion would be that somewhere in this policy, we make that clear, this is just for when, this is for other than special events. I mean, I, I, I hear what you're saying.
Right.
And, and, and I disagree with that, but I could see someone saying, where does it say this is only for non-special events? That, that's my read of it, in that we just simply say, this is the food policy for the library for when it's open, generally open to the public and, and not applicable to special events.
Because we would never use the policy when, when we have a special event, it would never come up. Because it's under a whole different, um, atmosphere and, and event, do you know what I mean? It's, it's not.
I'm concerned somebody from the public saying you're violating your own policy by hav, having food on the second floor. You're saying the public can do it, but we can do it, you know, for a library event or friends of the library event.
Right, but it's a closed event where we are hosting it and we're then encouraging it. Normally, we're not, do you know what I'm saying? I mean, it would be during our hours and, and during a specific timeframe that we would be acknowledging that to happen.
I understand, that's the intent.
Yeah.
I'm not so sure it's stated in the policy.
Um, through the chair?
Yeah.
Well, that, that's just my comment, that's my comment, that's my comment.
Okay, I'm member Dooley.
Through the chair, um, member Sturridge, uh, bullet point three on the policy, would that cover what you're trying to say or no?
Which, which bullet point, I'm sorry?
It's the third one, it says group meals are limited to group events in rented library spaces.
No, that's, what that means is, we have people who will show up and bring in a pizza.
Oh.
And they'll sit at a large table and want to have an open meal. That's a group meal, they haven't rented the space.
Okay.
We allow rented spaces to have food.
Right, okay.
So, Mark, in that case, which is why we write it that way, you could be on the second floor and rent the boardroom, because it's a rentable space, you can have food there. So that's why I had to put in that information for someone who's renting, and it's during public hours. So I know that, yeah, I mean, it's, there's, yeah.
Member Mitchner?
Yeah, I, to Mark's point, um, and maybe, I've been here a thousand years, so I've seen, I've seen this happen, like where we have like, um, we've had the, um, Foster Swift come in and give presentations to us or our own meetings, that's not rented necessarily, right? And that's during, sometimes that's during, um, open hours where we're eating. And of course, we're, we're trustees, we're, it's a training.
It's a library event.
I mean, you could look at it that way.
Right.
But I think to trustee Sturridge's point, if I don't know that, I just see that it's like rules for.
Got it.
For, what do you, was it, how's that go? Rules for thee and not for me or whatever.
No, I, I now see the point.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
So, I do, okay. So it's really when, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I will go back, yep.
And, and I think that can just be clarified with some tag on
Yes.
to the end of the first bullet, bullet point.
Yep.
Yeah, I can see it happening, it was just.
Yes.
It would happen, yes, member Bartlett.
I just wanted to, to point out with, um, Mark's comment, um, I wasn't, I wasn't there today, but I, I try to attend a number of the friends' meetings. And the friends' meetings are always at two o'clock in the afternoon, so they're about the time when school lets out. They're in the boardroom, and they always bring wonderful cookies. They are always there. So, yeah, I mean, you, you, you could have somebody sitting, you know, pointing out, saying, yeah, hey, I want to bring in, I just got out of school, I want to bring in a pizza, and here they are. And, and, you know, because the boardroom is like, very open, I mean, it's very visible, so that's.
Nope, that's a great example.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Anybody else? Member Chair Currie?
Suggestion, I don't know where it works in words, but we should have a lot of not, not tos. Is there a way to positively say where food delivery, like, or maybe just express it now, I don't know if it works positively, but where would you like food delivered?
Well, we don't want it at all, but we have no choice. Um, and I, and I honestly don't want to designate it, because then it will become a place that people do it. And we don't want to encourage it to be left somewhere either. So, I, you know, it really should occur in the parking lot. Someone should go.
I'm not supposed to say no food delivery, I mean, if that's.
Well, I don't know how, I don't know how you can do that, because again, to trustee Mitchner's point, with the cafe not being open on the weekend and past five o'clock and we're open to nine, that's, it, and it is since COVID with this delivery and stuff and people wanting access to food. Plus, I'll think of it in a health way, someone's diabetic, cafe's not open, and they might need to get some food. They need, they might know that they're needing something. I think you, you shouldn't keep someone from it, which we're not. We have a building that says yes, but you put parameters to how, so that's all.
The place you're gonna get is people have to walk in the parking lot, whatever, get their food.
Well, but you know what, I mean, that's, you know, we're not, we're not telling them no, that's the thing. We're not telling them no, we're not telling them it can't be accepted, we're not telling them they can't eat it on the first floor. It's just, we've got to have some parameters for it, because I'll tell you what, they're gonna, uh, this will come a day where they're like, well, can the, uh, can the employees go get my food? I mean, we've, it, it's come to some of, some of this stuff, so we, we want the responsibility to lie on the person who should be responsible, which is the one ordering or the person who wants to get paid, because maybe that person will cancel their order and say, hey, I didn't get my food. They'll deal with Uber Eats, right? So we don't want to say no, but it's, I, I think you have to think of it that way, just, you have to put it back on the person.
And metro airport, they kept struggling, where not, where Uber shouldn't be, where, you know, where they shouldn't be, finally they just said, okay, here's the designated place for rides, right?
Right.
And they allocate space for it, so.
Yeah. But I, if I designate a place, I don't want to be responsible for it. And that mi, that puts a responsibility on us to give a location to where it can be dropped off. That means we're gonna somehow take some ownership, and I don't think we should. Yeah.
And I'm concerned about the cleanup afterwards too.
Yeah.
Because I've seen pe, so many people walk away. We've all been at meetings where people drink something, eat something, and they just get up and walk away. And, uh, you know, I guess we're gonna have to educate.
I meant for the pizza box to don't fit in trash.
Right, and, yeah, and you'd be surprised sometimes what we.
Yeah, okay, good discussion.
I just had one really quick, thank you so much, I just had one really quick last, um, note slash, uh, item for discussion on this. And that was, you mentioned the staff quite a bit, and how it's a, a, you know, it can be a burden for them, but they're also hungry too. So, I, um, I'm just wondering how that ties in for them when they need to, because I think we need to consider them too in a couple of different ways. One, that they have to worry about everybody else's food, but also, I know when I'm at work, I, that's, at my office, uh, you know, I don't have, I get food, I get takeout, right, delivered, so.
So we have a location in the back, we have a staff door, and we have an area that's not in our main parking area where you can actually have deliveries made for the staff.
Perfect, thank you.
They are, yes, they are taken care of, and I appreciate that question.
Thank you.
I don't want the public to use that, because then what they'll do is they'll hit the doorbell and want a staff person, actually it's happened, um, pick up the food. You'd be surprised, the, what the public's doing.
I would not be surprised. No. Member Sturridge, do you have another matter?
Well, I, this discussion just, uh, made me think of, of a slight add-on in, in that regard, where it's the point that this staff will not accept food items from delivery services, like for other pa, for patrons or for other parties, if we added that, because they can accept food for themselves.
Right, but we have a, this is the public policy, we're not dealing with the employees. We've got employee policies.
Oh, you, okay, you see, it's, that's covered elsewhere.
Yes.
Okay, 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 my, okay, that's covered elsewhere.
So I don't want us muddying what's just for the public.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? All right, we will all come prepared to vote on this next month. This, along with the other item too, the collection development policy, no one's allowed to go out of town. No more red eyes for you. So, okay, good discussion though. Moving along then, um, I will, now, now it says a motion to adjourn going into closed session, but we are not going into closed session.
It shouldn't.
I know it, but it says motion to adjourn into closed session, but we are not going into closed session.
Oh.